Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. Today is April 20th, 2021. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Arundel Planning Board and we are doing a Zoom remote meeting. I'll start with a roll call. Let's see, we have Susan Roth.
Yeah.
Marty Kane.
Yeah.
Roger Moran.
Yeah.
James Lowery.
Yeah.
Myself. There are five of us, so we do have a quorum. First item is approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have approval of the minutes of August 6th, 2021.
August.
I'm sorry, say what?
August 6th?
I'm sorry, April 6th, thank you. April 6th, 2021. We have time for public comment. Then we have a public hearing. Arundel's Keep, a major preliminary subdivision application. Under pending applications, we have Arundel's Keep, a major preliminary subdivision application. Then we have new applications. Strickland Lane Commercial Building, a site plan review pre-app. We will then look at the land use ordinances. We have a discussion on the cluster housing planned unit developments. We will have a report from the town planner. I will say a couple of profound and deep thoughts. Highly unlikely, for those of you that know me. And then we will adjourn and go home. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion where you approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Roger, seconded by Susan. Let the record show, Tom McGinn has joined us. And we will proceed forward. So, all those in favor of the approval of the agenda?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Roger?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
It is unanimous? We will move on to minutes of April 6th, 2021.
Who was president at the meeting?
Hang on, and I can tell you.
Thank you, sir.
Susan, Rich. Um. And yourself, Marty, James Lowery, and myself.
Thank you.
Yep, we were, we were all here.
Guys, it wasn't that bad.
Somebody to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve as written.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Tom, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susan?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Roger?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
It is unanimous. The next item is public comment. This is the time at which somebody, any member of the audience, can make a comment or ask questions about something that is not on the agenda and that you would like us to address. I feel like, almost like a minister, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace. But hearing no comments and seeing no raised hands by anyone, we will move on to the public hearing. The public hearing is for Arundel's Keep, a major preliminary subdivision application. A proposal to develop an eight lot cluster subdivision with a 675 foot long private way serving two lots located off Irving Road on a 58.02 acre parcel. Tax map 19 lot 8 in the R4 and shoreline zones. Arundel's Keep LLC is the owner. Jason Vafayades PE is the applicant. Jason, you are here, so... Does anybody in the audience have any questions that they would like to ask Jason about the project? Seeing nobody raising their hands and or indicating that they have questions, we will close the public hearing. And move on to pending applications. The first application is Arundel's Keep, major preliminary subdivision application. Proposal to develop an eight lot cluster subdivision with a 675 foot long private way serving two lots located off Irving Road on a 58.02 acre parcel. Tax map 19 lot 8 in the R4 and shoreline zone. Arundel Keep LLC is the owner. Jason Vafayades PE is the applicant. And we determined two weeks ago that the application was determined to be complete. And we scheduled the public hearing for today. And we are ready to issue a preliminary subdivision approval. There has been an issue that we may have to address. And that is that we have been unable to locate a main hydro geologist that is able and willing to conduct a peer review of the applicant's nitrate migration study. However, town planner has sent out a note saying that staff has received interest from Seveian and Mahar geo engineers located in Cumberland. And we are awaiting confirmation of their interest in performing the peer review. Therefore, the applicant's final subdivision application may need to be amended if the peer review reveals a need for a design alteration.
Ted, do you have a little bit of a synopsis on what the issue was with, with locating a peer review hydro geologist?
He doesn't anymore. They're all moving on to hydro ge- basically in geo engineering. It seems to be more lucrative. All of the, the people that we've used in the past, two of the firms have been absorbed by other firms and their people have been converted over to basically geotecs. And Stephen Mahar was the one firm that did respond. I talked to a gentleman there. We've been playing phone tag. He's apparently on a job somewhere. So I didn't get anything from him today. Yesterday, of course, was a holiday. We played phone tag on Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, and so I still don't have a confirmation. But they're not, they'll do it. I did talk to several hydro geologists, several firms, a number of firms about this issue, and they said that basically that was the issue, that there were no real hydro geos doing this much anymore. The one that, that Atlantic Resource Consultants snag was one who's still doing it. The folks who, you probably remember, we had those done for, we had hydro geos done for Oak Ridge Terrace. That gentleman now works for the Portland, for the city of Portland. We had one who'd worked on subdivision down off of Limerick Road, the Elizabeth Way subdivision. That was a good one, but they, they have been absorbed and they have done, they've gone elsewhere. And the only one we had was CVM Mahar, who worked on the job on on one, on the, what was it? It was Jason, Jason's project, so. That's all I've had.
You had stories?
He lead. Let us know.
Okay.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Jason?
I'm just wondering, will there be some type of time limit? If, is there anybody lined up to be able to do this?
We're, we're just waiting back to hear from Seveian Mahar.
So if we do approve of this with that condition, will it be a time limit?
Before they, before we say, well, accept it as it is, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because so the condition will be that if, if it all goes through and we approve it, there'll be that condition that that's peer review still has to be done?
Yes. And if I can't find anybody in a reasonable time period being the next two weeks, I would say that we just have to accept it as it is.
Okay, yeah, because it
Hydro geologist that says this is the way it is, and all we want to do is check, check a few numbers. What we're concerned is the migration of nitrates, not exceeding five million parts per milliliter over, over boundaries. And that's the issue. That's our, that's our standard.
Okay.
Good question. If you can't find it for this particular, what do we do in the future?
There's the one guy who does it. We can commit to another project. I'm sure others will come out at some point. It's a part of it. It probably is also that, that with the, with all of the building that's occurring right now, and of course, the migration into less favorable soils. It's just a man for hydro, for basically geotech people dealing with unstable soils and difficult situations with heavy loads. That's where the demand seems to be right now. We could, actually, there was another one that Jason had told me about. It's the guys at Horizon. They have a hydro geologist, but of course, that's Jason's survey company. So we were in a situation where we'd have a conflict of interest and decided not to go down that road.
Well, I would imagine if there's sufficient professional integrity, that if push comes to shove, we could definitely use them. I mean, I don't know works for Horizon, any of the players there, but, you know, some review is better than none.
True. All right, so I'll take that as an instruction from the board, that if I don't hear from CVM Mahar, I'll contact Horizon.
Yeah.
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 Anything else from the board? Joan, I'm wondering, were you able to get a good agreement with Jason on, on securing access?
Yes, we, we have had good verbal communication, and I think we were waiting to get everything written down until we knew that it was going to get approved. But I, I see no issue with that. We've, we've been working very well together.
Okay, but I think we should make that a condition of approval. Given, given that we have worked so hard at getting this done, I would hate to see it fall apart at the last minute. So I think, I think as part of the condition of approval, the, we should have a copy of the signed agreement between ACT and Arundel's Keep.
Maybe we could have a signed agree, we could have the agreement in, in writing. I'm, I'm not sure he wants to give away the land and it's a chicken and egg thing.
It would be a draft at this point, Rich.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and a draft, a draft is fine. I just want to, I want to have something that we can look at and say, okay, this is the progress we've made. This is what we're looking at.
Okay.
And, you know, I understand his, his side, because he doesn't want to sign the agreement until he's got the approval.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yes.
The, the attorney for ACT and the town attorney have already talked with each other about review and formulation of this. So, so we have legal counsel that is looking at it for both perspectives, from both perspectives, and it is a condition of the approval here that they shall be supplied. The draft shall be supplied as part of the final subdivision application.
Okay.
Find these effective, proceed with those.
So what would the timing be on that, that you want to have that in hand?
As soon as the applicant wants to submit the final subdivision. If this is the preliminary, the next one is final, and it cleans up all the, the issues that are, that are, that are actually specified, excuse me, in the conditions of, of approval in this, in the preliminary.
But is the only remaining one this nitrate migration peer review study?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there are a few other things. He's got some easements he's got to do for the town, for the fire, you know, where the is, we need an easement for that. We need a maintenance agreement executed for the two lots that are going to be on First Lightway.
We can work in conjunction with Richard then. We'll talk and get an understanding of that timing, and I see no issue because I talked to the, to the joint lawyer just an hour or so ago as we were putting the mower on our co-owned tractor, so.
You have the requisite use agreement to share the mower, Joan?
Oh, good God, yeah.
We want proof, board?
I sharpen the blades. He gets the new seat. Yeah, we, we, we work it out.
Fair deal.
So one question for you, Ted. I'm looking at the findings of fact and approval motion on page two. Conformance with Article 11 Performance Standards. It says the Arundel Planning Board has determined the final subdivision. Shouldn't that be the pre-app?
It's the preliminary.
Okay.
Wow, yeah, you're right.
That's okay. I'll, I'll read it out as preliminary.
It is, but thank you for that was getting a little ahead of myself there.
Okay, so if there are no questions for the board and nobody has any comments that they would like to make, I need a motion.
Move to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Arundel's Keep.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Jamie and seconded by Roger. Whereas on November 12th, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board received a preliminary subdivision application from Arundel's Keep LLC for a cluster subdivision containing nine lots serviced in part by a 550 foot road called First Lightway located on 58.03 acre parcel tax map 19 lot 8 located at 150 Irving Road in the Rural Conservation District and the Resource Protection District. Whereas on November 21st, the planning board conducted a site walk of the property and the proposed road and lot locations, the planning board made a number of recommendations, including several alternative designs that would reduce infrastructure costs and increase lot sizes. Whereas on December 10th, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board declared the application incomplete. The applicant's agent reported that the planning office was working together to devise a more acceptable subdivision layout and conveyance of open space to a local nonprofit. Whereas on January 5th, 2021, the Arundel, the planning board reviewed an alternative sketch plan deemed it to be preferable to the original design. The applicant was encouraged to proceed with a resubmission of the preliminary subdivision plan with the new layout concept. Whereas on February 16th, 2021, the planning board received from Arundel's Keep LLC a preliminary subdivision application to develop an eight lot cluster subdivision with a 590 foot long private way serving two lots located off Irving Road on a 58.02 acre parcel tax map 19 lot 8 in the R4 and shoreline zones. The applicant resubmitted revised drawings and documents dated March 16th, 2021. Whereas upon submission of the revisions on April 6th, 2021, the planning board deemed the preliminary subdivision application for Arundel's Keep to be complete. Whereas on April 20th, 2021, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing. Whereupon the Arundel Planning Board has reviewed and given due consideration of the applicant's amended application and has arrived at the following findings. Findings of fact, number one. The owner and applicant of the parcel identified as tax map 19 lot 8 is Arundel's Keep LLC. Number two. The subject parcel consists of 58.03 acres with over 1,700 feet of frontage on Irving Road consisting of 28.24 acres of wooded wetlands and 1.26 acres of 100 year FEMA floodplain located in the R4 and Resource Protection Shoreland District. Number three, the applicant proposes to subdivide eight clustered lots with six lots fronting on Irving Road and two lots fronting on a 590 foot long private way named First Lightway. The clustered lots range from 45,712 square feet, 1.05 acres, to 91,833 square feet, 2.1 acres in area with frontage of 151 feet to 215 feet along Irving Road. First Lightway will be constructed for a distance of 590 feet and consist of a hammerhead turnaround. Gradient of the private way will be two to three degrees. Number five, net residential density calculations of unsuitable building area, including hydro soils, wetlands and proposed roads yields a net residential area of 27.83 acres. With the R4 zones, three acre lot size minimum, a maximum density of nine lots can be subdivided on the property. Eight lots are proposed. The proposed subdivision lots meet the dimensional requirements for a cluster subdivision as outlined in section 4.5 and 9.3.12 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. As a cluster subdivision, the applicant is proposing to convey, convey in feet 47.2 plus or minus acres of the remaining open space to the Arundel Conservation Trust to be owned and managed by the organization. In addition, the Arundel Conservation Trust will be conveyed a perpetual conservation easement 50 feet wide along the entire frontage of lots three through eight with Irving Road punctuated only by First Lightway, 50 foot wide right of way, and three 30 foot wide easements for common driveways serving lots three and four, lots five and six, and lots seven and eight. While the owners of lots three through eight retain title to the 50 foot conservation easement, they are bound by the restrictions that there shall be no removal of vegetation, soil, or any other natural material from the conservation easement without the written consent of the Arundel Conservation Trust. Number seven, all lots will be serviced onsite by onsite wells, and the applicant has provided documentation that all lots can be serviced by onsite septic systems and wells that meet the state plumbing code. Number eight, fire protection shall be provided by the installation of a 30,000 gallon concrete cistern and dry hydrant plumbing located to the west of First Lightway as shown on the record plans. Number nine, lots one, five, six, seven, and eight, all contain significant portions of areas zoned as a resource protection district and shall have deed restrictions that no disturbance of soil or vegetation shall occur within this district as delineated on the approved plan without permission of the Arundel Planning Board. Number 10, the applicant has submitted plan sets, engineered drawings, and stormwater calculations prepared by Atlantic Resource Consultants dated March 6th, March 16th, 2021. Property surveys were prepared by Horizon Engineering and dated March 16th, 2021. Soil surveys and septic system evaluations were prepared by Longview Partners LLC and dated October 2020. Hydrologic evaluations have been prepared by Mark Sensi Geological Incorporated and dated March 15th, 2021. Informants with Article 11 Performance Standards. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined that the preliminary subdivision plan application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 11 of the Arundel Subdivision Ordinance as follows. 11.1 Water Pollution. The proposed project will not discharge runoff directly into any water body and provides a method of disposal and treatment that will not require a license or permit from Maine DEP that meets the town water pollution control standards. 11.2 Water Supply. The proposed subdivision is not within 1,000 feet of a public water supply and therefore individual wells and onsite and onsite septic systems will be installed for each residential and commercial lot. The fire chief has required the applicant to install a 30,000 gallon cistern west of First Light Drive with a pull-off apron and dry hydrant to provide fire protection. Details of the cistern and apron and the proposed fire department easement for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the cistern system shall be provided by the Arundel Fire Chief and included in the final subdivision submissions. 11.3 Impact on Existing Water Supplies. The proposed project will not require and therefore not impact established public water supplies or suppliers. Well logs from surrounding properties indicate adequate water supply for individual wells. 11.4 Soil Erosion Control Plan. The applicant has submitted a plan demonstrating adequate soil erosion control measures to protect downstream properties and exposed slope during the construction process. 11.5 Traffic Conditions. The vehicle trip generation of this project onto Irving Road is anticipated to be less than 120 trips per day, thereby not achieving a level of service E-rating during the peak hours, adequate site distances to and from Irving Road are provided for First Lightway and the three common driveways. 11.6 Sewage Disposal. Sewage disposal shall be accommodated by onsite septic systems. Documentation has been submitted to the board verifying soil suitability for onsite septic disposal. 11.7 Solid Waste. The proposed project will not generate undue solid waste volumes that will tax the town's capacity to dispose of solid waste. 11.8 Impacts on Scenic Beauty Historic Sites and Rare Natural Areas. The applicants have designated a large portion of the property for permanent open space that will be retained and maintained by the Arundel Conservation Trust. The limits of projected forest land removal are delineated on the record plan. There are no archaeological, historical, or cultural or critical shoreline areas identified on the site, nor are there any areas identified by main natural heritage programs onsite. The project is not located within 1,320 feet of any deer wintering yard identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Portions of the project are within a resource protection district and deed restrictions prohibiting vegetation, vegetation of soil removal. Prohibiting removal of vegetation and soil within the RP setbacks without planning board approval shall be assigned to the deeds for lots one, five, six, seven, and eight. 11.9 Conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. The project is in conformance with the 2016 Comprehensive Plan for the R4 District. 11.10 Financial and Technical Ability. The applicant has provided adequate evidence of technical capability to complete the project. The applicant will be required to provide a performance assurance for all proposed site and subdivision improvements as part of the final subdivision approval. 11.11 Impact on Water Quality or Shoreline. The project is not located in the watershed of Brimstone Pond and therefore exempt from the standards of 11.11. 11.12 Impact Upon Groundwater Quality. The applicant has prepared a groundwater impact study prepared by Summit Engineering that documents that the proposed subdivision will not increase NO3 and concentrations above five milligrams per liter at the property line. The planning board has ordered a peer review of the submitted groundwater study that has, that is not complete to date. 11.13 Floodplain Management. The project is located in a FEMA identified 100 year floodplain. No homes are proposed to be within the floodplain area. 11.14 Freshwater Wetlands. The applicant has identified all freshwater wetlands on the project site and has designed the project to have minimal impact upon these resources. 11.15 Stormwater Management. The, the planning board has determined that the proposed project will have negligible impact on stormwater drainage for the two, five, 10, and 25 year frequency storms. 11.16 Reservation of Open Space Commonly As Fire Protection Facilities and Private Way. The applicant is preserving 47.12 acres of permanent open space that will be accessible to the, to the residents of the development. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision application of Arundel's Keep LLC to develop an eight lot cluster subdivision with a 590 foot long private way serving two lots located off Irving Road on a 58.02 acre parcel. Tax map 19 lot 8 in the R4 and Resource Protection District, subject to the following conditions. Number one. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision application with all associated documents and corrected admissions by October 19th, 2021, or forfeit this preliminary approval. Number two. Final plans and profiles for Arundel's Keep submitted as part of the final application shall show location of all underground Location of all underground utilities, transformers, and street trees and preserve tree stands. Details of the utilities installation shall be included along with the location plan. What is this fifty foot OC? And schedule and planting schedule for the required street trees. Street trees that are to be preserved must be identified on the record plans and deed restrictions must be included in the homeowner deeds. Number three, details of the cistern installation riser and dry hydrant. Loading apron and protective bollards shall be approved by the fire chief prior to submission of the final subdivision application. The applicant shall also increase the dimensions of the hammerhead turnaround surface and curb radii to the chief's specifications. Excuse me. Number four, the applicant shall also delineate the location of the fire cistern maintenance easement on the. Plans and shall submit an easement deed conveying maintenance, repair, and replacement rights to the town of Arundel for the fire cistern. Number five, the applicant shall provide the exact language of the fifty foot conservation easement. To be established along the entire road frontage along Irving Road for review and approval by the town attorney. The applicant shall reimburse the town for the town attorney's review. Number six, a private way maintenance shall be submitted to the planning board binding lots one and two. For the maintenance and repair of first lightweight. Number seven, the applicant shall submit updated cost estimates of all site improvements associated with. Arundel's keep LLC subdivision as well as cost estimates of first lightweight. The applicant shall also declare what type of performance assurance that will be submitted upon final subdivision approval. Number eight, the applicant shall include a restriction on all subdivision deeds and provisions. In the homeowners association covenants prohibiting vegetational clearing within the town of Arundel seventy five foot stream buffer. Or within fifty to one hundred feet of wetlands as delineated on the record subdivision plans. Without prior approval by the Arundel Planning Board. Number nine, the applicant shall reimburse the town of Arundel for hydrogeologic peer review. Studies prior to the submission of the final subdivision application. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board. This twentieth day of April, two thousand twenty one. Well, that's a lot of words.
Whoops, my interrupting. Motion we approve as read. Good reading, Rich.
Only we need to correct item number seven. Where it says Oak Ridge, we want to put Arundel's keep. And there is one typo with attorney which we can just fix.
Yep. Also noted, and the the other thing I was wondering about, depending on where you're reading, it's either. Fifty eight point zero two or fifty eight point zero three acres.
It's three.
It is, it is three, okay.
There was one that said two and then then there the last one we got was three. So it's fifty fifty two point zero three now.
Okay.
And what is fifty OC, Pat?
Fifty feet on two. Really not relevant. It's really not. That's a standard that we have, but it's not relevant to this project, really. Because we are conserving instead of tearing down those trees, we're putting in an easement, but this is a standard we put in all our subdivisions.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the board?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Tom and seconded by Roger. Hearing no discussion. Susan?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Roger?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
It is unanimous. There you go, Jason. You're you're set to get up and running.
Everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Item number one, Strickland Lane Commercial Building Site Plan Review Pre-Application. A proposal to construct a seventy five hundred square foot building on six point four one acre parcel. Tax map thirty four lot three A serviced by a driveway through thirteen twelve Portland Avenue. In the downtown business district. And the. SP Shoreland District. Kevin Lord is the owner. Henry has some Sibego techniques. Is the owner's agent and I saw Henry someplace. Oh, there he is.
At the bottom now.
Hi, everybody moves around. We should find some way to freeze the screen so you can keep looking for people. Take it away, Henry.
Thank you, Richard. It's nice to meet everybody tonight. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Let's see if I can share my screen here real quick. Is that possible, Richard?
I'd. I see no reason why you can't.
You can also go to speaker, speaker view, so you can see the whole, the big one.
It's it's quite all right if I'm unable to. I just have one visual that might help as we read through a few things.
You should you should be able to do it now.
Ah, wonderful. Thank you. Perfect. Excellent. So thanks again for all your time. This is the the proposed project here that was included in the packet. I have taken the liberty to add a little color to you for clarity. But down the the bottom section here is the existing building and this drive actually heads out to to Portland Road. And this this project is proposed as Richard stated, it's a seventy five hundred square foot. Commercial kind of flex space building with five units or five spaces within it. That would allow, you know, large overhead doors and loop parking around it. Currently, we're anticipating about enough parking here for twenty six parking spaces. With the use being some form of either contractor or professional services, commercial use. The the property itself is actually currently on a separate from the existing property down along Portland Road. It does have frontage along Strickland as part of this proposal. This project would actually be merging the two lots together into one large lot overall. For the access to this drive through here, to the rear of the property here. I know at one point in the application, it was indicated that there's the potential to designate a medical marijuana caregiver facility. I can't say if that's still the case. I just know that I'm not going to, we, you know, it is an idea that's being thrown around and. Any feedback that the board has towards that would be great, but the the major feedback we're looking for at this level. For what we're looking at here is the stream protection district that's shown on the map. Has actually shown is going through a portion of this project. And in this particular, in this particular drawing, it is shown in. In the lighter green section here where the wetlands are, the lighter green is the wetlands and the stream protection. District is shown going through this area. We have since been out onsite and had discussion with DP onsite as well as wetland scientists that are unable to determine a stream through there. And we just kind of would look for the board's direction and understanding before we push this to the next level here at the next next submission. We'd really like some feedback and understanding of whether or not we'd be able to remove that. Excuse me, stream protection district from the map, given the the in the field and actual on the ground features of the land there. So I'd be here, sad that Mr. Lord's unable to be with us this evening, but I'm here to act as his representative and answer any questions the board may have. Hopefully bring some light to anything moving forward here and getting either a site visit. Site visit scheduled with the board or eliciting some feedback from you guys. If you guys have any questions, comments, I'm here.
I I do have one. If you look in the upper left hand corner, there appears to be a stream district. There due to the lighter shading of the green. Right over there. Yeah, right. I can't, I can't. I'm trying to point to it to show you where, like you.
Yes, right here.
Yes.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that, Richard. The lighter green, I should state, is is showing wetlands. And the map itself, I should clarify, the map showed that stream protection district coming down through this section of the wetlands. So the the site is located a majority in the upland. The building and all the impervious is actually located in the upland, but due to. Some small wetland in here, under a thousand square feet here. And then due to some grading, we have a small impact of wetland here as well. Should this move forward, stream prediction district or not, we would be looking to file a PBR. With DP. For those about twelve hundred square feet of impact, but the majority of the site sits in the upland area and our goal is to avoid any. Any major wetland impacts, especially to the the south of the site here.
What is the distance between the the stream protection zone and the edge of the pavement?
The, as it's shown, we have just about. Let me pull up the scale for you and I can get that right on there. So we are just inside of, that would be the closest portion here. About forty five feet to the edge of the wetland there from the edge of pavement. At the at the closest point.
Okay.
And the fill would be right next to it, right, Henry?
Uh, yeah, due to due to leveling out the the pad here and creating the parking. We would be working to grade pretty close within about five to ten feet of the wetlands. In order to actually make the the pad and parking site usable and also IDA accessible.
Have a question. What's downstream? Which way is downstream and what where is? Where does the flow end up on?
That's a great question. I can tell you that I know it flows down this direction. Into, I know we're not showing it here. We only have the wetlands fully mapped for this property. But I know from aerial imagery that there is some wetlands down in this area down below. And then it does actually find its way. I believe there is some flow that probably finds its way underneath Portland Road there. Through a culvert.
This is a, this is the headquarters of a tributary to the Gulf Mill Brook.
So the. Thank you, Ted.
I thought that would be draining into the Kennybunk River.
It does, but. I don't know, Henry, even topo seems to show there might be a watershed break here. Was I correct in that? Way up in the the corner, yeah, I'm pointing at it like.
I did the same thing, Ted.
Yeah, are you looking for the watershed?
I'm sorry about the stream. If we continue up the the swale with the stream, it almost looks like there's a watershed right right in there somewhere.
If that. Somewhere in here.
Kind of looks like there might be. I don't know if there is or not. I don't know what your topo seems to show. It might not be. It might be such a slight gradient difference, but.
And that's really, that's really what we have here is it's such a slight grade differential, you know, it's really. We know from being on site that it most likely really starts to flow down towards this south southeast here. But you're right, it's very shallow and in determining some areas, it'd be really hard to even determine a. A kind of channel of sorts through there. It's really just a flat area. I think, you know, between being hemmed in on Portland Road. And having some upland in here, it's just kind of that that bowl that gets that that's capturing and trapping a lot of that that water in there and making it sit.
Has this lot been cleared already?
Uh, no, I do not believe this lot has already been cleared. There might be portions leading up to the the lot line, but I don't believe this lot has been clear already.
Good, don't.
Henry, what kind of drive aisle widths do you have throughout the? Right around the perimeter of the building for, you know, suitable access?
Certainly. Uh, we're showing. Close to forty feet, about forty feet. I'm doing a takeoff from a PDF, so it's not exact. So it's it's forty feet. From the edge of parking to the building and on the other side here, about the same, we have about forty five.
Okay.
So in terms of having larger vehicles and things with trailers, we try to accommodate a little bit wider drive aisles in areas to make bigger turns. As we move into the next phase and we get a little bit more determined uses and and work with Mr. Lord a little bit more, we might be able to reduce that up. And and short things up a little bit more.
And. What level of stormwater permitting are you looking at?
Uh, we are looking at permitting, so we are under an acre of impervious surface currently. So we'd be looking at detaining, detaining flows for peak runoff as well as. We'd be in for a storm, a PBR, a permit by rule for the minimal amount of wetlands that is impacted by. The parking area and some additional grading.
Oh, and it looks like you may have had some small basin sketched in.
Yep, exactly. So we've sized the basins thus far, and that's exactly right. Yep. Uh, so this is where we'd be looking for detaining some of the flows as well as this portion over here. We haven't developed any of the the outlet control structures yet, any of the riprap sections, but we are looking, we wanted to generally have proof of concept.
No vernio pools anywhere through there?
I'm sorry?
No vernier pools.
We do have one vernal pool onsite that we are making sure to steer clear of at the moment. Uh, and that's that's this section over here. Uh, so we're not proposing to impact any vernal pools via any grading or the impervious surfaces. And our goal is to catch any runoff from the site and direct it away from it.
Is this site going to require any kind of facilities like water and sewers?
Uh, this particular site will have is proposing a well at the moment as well as a septic. Septic would be located over by test pit number four here.
What's the distance from? The road to the back of the building? Why I'm asking that is because of fire protection.
Sure. Are you looking for this this distance from the existing paving here or all the way from Portland Road?
Well, I'm looking for the idea of within where your fire hydrant would be within a thousand feet.
Okay, I believe I believe we'd be within a thousand feet. I can get you guys that number and make sure that that's forwarded on to you. I don't have the exact distance. I believe we are within a thousand feet, though.
Because if I think if I'm correct, the fire hydrant is on the other side of Route one.
I believe you are correct, up by the pizza shop, correct?
Yes, I think so. Yes, right there at the corner of the pizza shop and. Yes, it is. And I think if the existing building that is there now, they ran water to it.
Yes, there is. There is, I believe, public water running to the existing building now, correct?
I can just be clear that the access will be through the driveway of of the abutting property.
That's correct. Um, yeah, the access to will be through the the drive in the abutting property and. It would make its way out to Portland Road from there. And this this particular lot line that separates them, the two lots would be absorbed and that lot line would go away. They become one large parcel. And this, this particular lot line, uh, that separates them, uh, the two lots would be absorbed and that lot line would go away. They become one large parcel.
Okay, good. I was gonna ask if you had an easement or, alright, so that, that is being purchased at, at the same time or?
Yeah, the owner actually owns this adjacent lot here. And so he's, he is, I believe he's owned this parcel for a while and is now looking to develop it. And in doing so, uh, be looking to just merge the two properties.
Okay, good. That solves a lot of problems.
I have a question. Is, so is the marble yard gonna move? Or are you gonna drive past the marble stands into the back property? Is that how it's gonna work?
Yes, I believe there'll be some rearranging, uh, to make sure there's always, uh, access and there's nothing in the way. But yes, the, the two buildings will operate and both be, uh, open and operational at the same time.
Okay, cause that's pretty narrow. If not, none of that stuff that's to the left of the buil, the current existing building, if it remains where it is, it'd be really hard to get trucks, a fire truck or any kind of emergency vehicles through there, up into the new parcel. Cause it's got stuff all over the place.
Certainly. I, I think we'd certainly make sure that, uh, in moving forward, we'd make, uh, Mr. Lord aware that, uh, make, need to make sure that we have everything stored appropriately and make sure there's always fire access through there.
Right.
Thank you, Susan.
Do, do you know, is there existing, um, cause I'm not familiar with that site, existing, um, driveway width through there?
Uh, yeah, you know, they actually have a very similar situation. Uh, so from the building to the edge of parking, there's about forty feet in that location. Uh, to Susan's point, there's a lot of materials, uh, that congest, uh, the drive aisle a bit. But from the building to the back edge of the parking, there's about forty feet, uh, along there before it actually narrows down to a typical drive aisle width of about twenty, twenty-four feet as it heads out to Portland Road.
Okay.
Uh, Chair?
Yes.
Henry, what's the second smaller building? What's the intent of that? I didn't really pay much attention to it, but I was wondering, what, what, what is the purpose of it?
Sure, Ted. That, that's actually currently, uh, being explored as a, as a kiln for wood and wood drying.
Oh, okay. When you say wood, you mean, uh, finished wood? You're not talking firewood, I assume?
Correct. Yes, yeah. Uh, for, uh, yeah, exactly. Finished wood. Thank you.
Would they be prepping their own wood there?
I believe it'd just be a kiln for drying wood. Outside of that, I, I actually can't speak to too much of what they'd be, what the kiln would be used for. Uh, I can get more information on that for you as well and have that for the next, uh, submission.
So if, if I understood you correctly, there is, there is no stream running through the Stream Protection District that is indicated here?
Uh, that is correct from our findings, uh, from being on site, uh, and having, uh, our wetland scientists as long with, uh, DEP on site. Per their definition, per DEP's definition of determined, uh, stream banks and channels, uh, they were unable to de- detect a stream uh, early this spring.
Okay. Ted, do you know if that shows up on the map?
Yes, it does. And I don't ever believe the United States Geological Service is ever wrong.
No, they couldn't possibly have made a mistake like that.
Not from ten thousand feet up.
Only ten thousand? I thought they did thirty thousand foot flyovers. I, I, the only reason I'm asking is because of the restrictions in terms of the setback that is required.
And that is something we, we'd hope, uh, we'd look to actually hopefully have that, uh, stream protection removed from the map, uh, just with, hopefully with some insight from the board, whether it's a, a site visit and, and working through that amendment process for the map. Uh, and that's kinda why we've, we've gotten the plans this far to, as a proof of concept, but, uh, we would like to see if that, uh, that portion of the Stream Protection District could be removed from the map.
Ted, how does that work? Is that on the official zoning map? Was that a yes?
That was, I'm sorry, apparently I'm becoming unstable here. Um, yes, uh, it is, uh, it is on the official map. Figures, cause I just, uh, just started a new one and just got my new sheet in today with the, the new delineations on it. Um, so it's already outdated. The, the thing I would suggest here, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that the board would go out and do this, the requisite sidewalk and do its own investigation. Take a look at the site before it gets, we get leaf out, a lot of stuff gets in there. Take a look to confirm what the, uh, DEP and what the applet is, uh, um, indicated and do a sidewalk to make your own determination. If that's the case, then what you would have to do is make a determination to change the map. The shoreline zoning map. And remember, our map is illustrative. It's intended essentially to, uh, indicate whether our issues and, and it's really, all things are determined by site conditions in the end.
I definitely think we need to do a sidewalk. There's no question.
So the board, the board should schedule that tonight.
I think the, the first available date for a sidewalk, uh, at this point is May fourth. Unless you guys decide that you wanna do one, uh, on a Saturday. Or, or some other evening that is available. But the next meeting is May fourth and we normally do them before the meeting.
I move, we conduct a sidewalk on May fourth at five thirty.
One second, uh.
Okay, motion was made by Jamie, seconded by Roger to do a sidewalk of, on May fourth at five thirty. Any discussion?
Yeah, are stakes, are stakes, are any of that gonna be out so we can, since, since it's not cleared? It's.
Yeah, could we get some stakes to mark out the corners of the buildings and, and areas of the parking lot?
Yes, in fact, I believe those stakes might already be there, uh, but I can, I don't think we have them for the corners of the parking lot. Uh, so we can certainly, uh, take that into account before May fourth.
Yeah, they, that, that might be important because that's gonna be the, the measurement point on, on that stream resource.
Yep, and that, uh, that wetland, I believe, is still flagged at this point. So we still have the, the flags on the delineation for the wetland and the building state. Um, but I believe we'll, we'll just make sure we get the corners of the parking lot there.
Anything else you guys would like to look at that day?
Henry, speaking of that, is that a, uh, current delineation?
The wetland delineation?
Yes.
Yes, that was done, I believe, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty-one or the end of twenty, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, summer of, summer of, summer of.
It's recent, that's fine. It's recent.
Yeah, within five years.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
The farm that's over on, um, Old Limerick Road, which is somewhere off Strickland Lane or a Bud Strickland Lane, is that, and that's all wetland through there. How does that fit with, uh, in this property itself?
Part of the same system, Marty. Question is, where does it go? Kinda disappears in the woods there, but there is that large pond, as you know, that they mowed all the typhoon there, but, um, there is a large wetland is shown on the, uh, shoreline zone map. The stream goes down to Strickland Lane and goes along and then goes eventually under Strickland Lane. And it's not, it, it shows it going right by this site. Um, but it appears that, uh, given the, they're, given the, uh, some of the evidence we've been given that it may not go all the way. Be a terminal. It picks up again in this wetland here and goes, go, uh, proceeds basically in a southeasterly way, man or two, Gulf Mill Brook. I'll get that, that map up. Make sure you guys get that map up. We, we're, we're building a new one right now. We're updating, uh, the shoreline zone map. This was a number of issues on it. And of course, we need all the updates in the parcels, cause we haven't had a parcel update in four years, so. But we're working on that right now.
Uh, when would that, Matt, if you don't mind me asking, when would that map be available?
Pretty soon. I would say within a month.
Great.
Just kick my GIS consultant, uh, you know, a little bit along down the road. He's been working pretty hard on it. We've had some issues that we've had to correct. And, uh, difficult, difficult things, but, uh, I think we've gotta work out, so.
Great.
I'll let you know, Henry. Cause I, I can, I can probably give you, send you the file when we get it.
Yeah, if, if it provides any sort of information regarding any stream or locations of streams or to this site, uh, that'd be great information for us to have as well.
It's, I understand one thing, it is, at the same time, it's not any better than a WI. So, you know, we, we don't. Unfortunately, we don't have really the funds to be able to integrate wetland delineations as we go into the map. You know, that's, that, that's a bigger job. Someday maybe, but right now we don't get, basically, uh, take pieces of wetlands delineations and, and fold them into the map yet.
Well, thanks, Ted.
In relation to this, where's the Rundle storage?
They're right, they're right to the east. Actually, so, yeah, they're sort of to the north. Yeah, they're over that way.
And the lobster company, Marty's on the other side.
I think, no, there's a piece of property in between that. Farther down.
Not far. It's like twelve hundred and something. So, yeah, there's one piece of property, I think, in between the lobster company and, uh, the current building.
It's a resident, yes.
Right.
Actually, you have SL Tech, I believe, is right next to, uh, the old one. That's Carol's, um, facility, uh, Mercedes facility is right there. And then on the other side is Prime.
Hey Ted, did we vote on that motion for the sidewalk?
No, you didn't.
We didn't. Okay. I didn't think we had. We got distracted. So there is a motion on the floor to do the sidewalk, five, five thirty, May fourth. Jamie?
Alright, sorry.
That's okay. Marty?
I guess so.
Susan?
Yes.
We lost Roger. Where's Roger?
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, there you are. Okay. Yes or no on the sidewalk?
Yes.
And it is unanimous?
I vote yes too, by the way.
Oh, yeah, I caught you when you came in. It's like all of a sudden you started to speak and you popped up on the screen and I'm going, wait a minute. Okay. I'm gonna take back the screen share. By doing that. Thank you very much, Henry.
Thank you for your time, everybody. I appreciate it and I appreciate your feedback. We'll see you at five thirty on May fourth. Thank you.
Okay. Next item. Proposed amendments to land use ordinance nine three twelve cluster housing planned unit developments. You should all have the documentation that Ted has sent out. Hopefully. Do you wanna update us, Ted?
Yeah, we had, we had, uh, we, a- as you saw in the minutes, we've gotten a lot of stuff done. We're now getting to the sticky point of what to do with these soil drainage classifications. And, uh, how we wanna proceed with these. Um, I mean, some other amendments you'll notice in the, uh, in the rear portion, but this is really the crux of, one of the big issues is how are we gonna determine minimum lot sizes, uh, for, for these, uh, for this approach we're gonna be taking, which is gonna be somewhat soil based. The board said they do wanna go with a soil based, determination of minimum lot size and, uh, the dilemma is, there's really two ways we can do it. One way is we can adopt the New Hampshire protocols, which basically establishes the minimum site, uh, the minimum lot size based on the type of soil that's there, the gradient of the, of the property. Um, and that results in some pretty significant, um, lots, uh, sizes that more or less un- undermines cluster development. Um, it also uses a methodology of having, you, you lay out your lot and then you map the amount of soils, the different soils you have. And then they're multiplied by the, uh, um, by the, um, the minimum lot size here and divided, you know, it's, it's, it's a rather complex system here. Uh, and divided, you have to reset radio of, ratio of one in order for the lot to be considered to be successful. Um, it really does not take clustering into effect much at all. As you probably know, this is really minimum lot size methodology that's used primarily for just conventional lots in New Hampshire. It's a very good system. A lot of people, a lot, a lot of folks, um, swear by it because it does base soils, not, that base lot lines and lot sizes, not on what the compliance says should be there, but what, what's on the ground and what's actually capable of supporting, um, supporting, you know, the septic systems that you're gonna be putting on there. And you know, they go from, from all the way from, uh, thirty-one thousand square feet to, uh, a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. So you're going from less, little bit more than a half an acre to, uh, considerably more than a half an acre to, uh, you know, to several acres, to three acres. So, um, we're really, when you get into the very poorly drained soils, like the ones we just encountered over at, uh, um, Rundle's keep, you know, we had a lot of somewhat poorly drained soils there with, uh, um, with the, uh, Namburg, somewhat poorly drained soils. Um, some of those lots wouldn't be able to be that big if we adopt this system. We had, as you, as you noted in the findings, in fact, we had lots that ranged from one acre all the way up to two acres. Um, some of those lots would have to be a minimum of two acres. The question is, uh, do we wanna proceed with this rather tough way or do we wanna start looking at a percentage? And one of the things that I, I had looked at on table twelve, three, and again, this is, this is in, in estimate, was coming up with a maximum lot reduction that you could get based on the soils. So in other words, um, what it says is if you have very good soil like class one, you can reduce your lot size by fifty percent, but no less than twenty-five thousand. And that's for an atom soil or any kind of those rapidly draining soils that are very granular. The ones we run into most of the time are gonna be in the class three, class four range. And again, it's, it's, it's saying, uh, essentially in a class three, which would be with some of our Krogan soils that we have. If you have those, you, uh, you can get fifty percent, but no less again than twenty-five thousand. Uh, class two is actually a little bit better because it's not as rapid draining as a class one. Remember, class one's like going through a sieve. And in some cases, you really actually don't to, to, to go too fast, cause then you get pollution as a result of non-treatment of the F flow. See, a class two is, is, uh, is, is rapidly draining, but not very rapidly draining. And that's probably one of the better ones. Class three is a moderately well drained. Class four is somewhat, and then class five is, that's when we get into the Namburg, uh, Namburg soils that are actually poorly drained. Those are the poorly drained soils. So those are the benefits. The ones that we might recognize if we go back to the first, first table. Uh, or table twelve, one, where we, we classify soils. Well, these are bright and are nice, which we are famous for in this town. We have tremendous number of, uh, um, burn, a lot of, a lot of Romney's, for instance, a lot of it, Duckbrook, Oakbrook watershed. is very flat, flattens out after it crosses Limerick Road, goes down the hill and then really starts flattening out and just meanders down to the, uh, to the river. There's a lot of rainum and Romney and scantic soils in there and they're all poorly drained. And you get these areas of, um, of, uh, where it really flattens out and you get some, you get the, you get the peats. You get the benefit fruits and the Saco's and the Sebagelbucky peaks. And, uh, so those are the ones that you, and they're just not buildable. You, you couldn't get a, you couldn't get a HHE 200 on those kind of soils. And actually you really can't get it, uh, an HHE 200 on a class five soil unless you build a big mound. You have to put it, you have to pre-engineer that quite a bit. Uh, some of the pushback I'm getting from, I, I asked for some feedback from some soil scientists and there is a, I believe that the, uh, that the engineered soil, uh, the engineered septic systems can, can actually work fairly well in a classified soil, but you have to do a lot of engineering to do that. And Jamie, I don't know if you, you, you can speak to this because you deal with alliance. I, I have, I have some concern. It's one thing to do an industrial sized, you know, septic system that's very well mounted, but I, some sometimes we're having all these whole mounted septic systems on a classified soil. We're conserving, of course, that we, we would have a lot of potential premature failures in close proximity to each other.
Yeah, that, and you know, especially when you get into smaller lot sizes, the potential for, um, the lack of treatment migration downward and then going into neighboring wells.
So we'd have lateral movement.
Right.
I have a couple of questions on this foot. One is, i- is this getting too complex? The other is, is, are these considerations already being, uh, being done? But, um, just like with, with a Rundle's keep, you know, they, they, it kind of got caught that the soils weren't weren't good enough?
Yeah, that, you know, that's some of the arguments that they're saying that the plumbing code accounts for that. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure I necessarily buying into that because I know that other, other community, other states have much more stringent, um, separations between, um, what's considered, considered to be limiting factor, a limiting factor is either bedrock or, uh, or a high watermark or indications of high water. So it would be water table or indications of water table by soil structure, by, by, uh, what's called modeling, which is actually oxidation of iron in the soil that creates actual rust marks for all intensive. The more rust marks you have, the more indication of that there is an active rising and falling water table. Seasonal and sometimes, but, um, that there are times of the year when you're going to be probably well within, uh, reach of that. That's why modeling, uh, modeling is a great indicator, glaying of the soils, uh, which is, uh, basically the washing out of the nutrients in the soils. It takes on a grayish color or or an olive-ish color in which a lot of the minerals are being washed out, uh, over prolonged inundation. And, uh, you know, these are colors that they use, but I'll tell you some, some states, many states in New England have much, much, I would say more, more stringent, uh, characteristic, more stringent requirements for that limiting factor separation. State of Massachusetts went through a period, what, about 10 years ago, maybe a little bit more, where they had so many failing systems that they, uh, they revamped their entire, um, plumbing code so that you had to have three foot separation between the, um, uh, between the bottom of the bed and the limiting factor. Maine, I'm, you know, I keep forgetting it. You'll have to forgive me. You may, it's a matter of, I think, 11 inches or nine inches, something like that. In other states around us, it's three feet. So, um, do, does our plumbing code, is our plumbing code more progressive? Does it require Elgin systems and some of these pre-treatment systems in which you actually have uh, aeration of, of the effluents so that it actually breaks down much faster? Yeah, there, there are those systems and I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm not sure how effective they are. I know they have to be somewhat effective, but I guess my concern is if we have, and I think we all have the same concern, if we have too many of these systems in a cluster development, then we start getting into a problem. I think a lot of the plumbing code is based on a certain minimum lot size. And if we have too many, uh, small cluster lots with systems right next to each other, the concern is will that have an impact on groundwater? Will that have, will that effluent be properly treated before it starts getting into the groundwater? That's one of the reasons why we started looking at minimum lot sizes and maximum lot sizes in the cluster. Because there we, many towns say you, the most you can do is a 50% for a cluster lot. So whatever the zone is, you can reduce it down to 50%. We don't have that limitation. Our limitation is, is, uh, you can go all the way down to the minimum lot size of a plumbing code, which is 20,000 square feet. Um, and that is less than a half an acre.
So I have a question. Rich, Ted. You know, a lot of these statewide regulations, mandates, whatever are statewide. And we're trying to enact something for the town of Arundel. And we're trying to make it work within the structure that we already have. So I'm not sure that these very well organized charts and whatever that are used statewide in the state of New Hampshire and elsewhere necessarily translate well for an application in a town the size of Arundel. And so maybe what we ought to consider, or at least I think we should, like what we did with the Rundle's keep is before we approve a plus, a cluster and, you know, lot sizes, a number of houses and whatever, that there has to be some kind of, uh, survey, uh, professional survey or proof that the land can support all these lots and the septic systems and the wells before the cluster or the modified cluster is approved. So, you know, if we want to put a minimum on a lot size, let's say you said 21,000 square feet. But whoever the developer is has to show the town of Arundel that the soil and the number of units that are being built can cohabitate successfully without impacting the environment around it and other homes and wells around it is in addition. So I, can't we simplify this rather than going through all these descriptions of different soil types and everything else like that and put it on the developer to prove to the town of Arundel, to the planning board that their soil, their land can support their development without impacting everything that's around it, natural and already existing?
That's the question. And the problem is that frankly speaking, I don't know if systems are available. That's a huge task. What you're talking about is a very big task. Because, um, the state of Maine knows exactly what, what works with one lot, but and all of their models are based on one lot. But the question is what happens when you have multiple, multiple small lots and poor soils? What happens over the long term with some of this, this nitrate buildup? Does it always get filtered? Does it run off into the water? We don't know. Does it affect the wells? We know that in poor soils, it's not going to infiltrate very, very easily and readily. And the question is, is there going to be an impact to your groundwater?
But so when in, but when in doubt, Ted, then I think it doesn't get approved. Unless they can prove otherwise. I mean, you know, that's the bottom line. Show me how it's, it's all okay. And I'll consider approving it. But if you can't show that to me, it doesn't get approved. Period.
I know. I, I guess my question would be, by what standard are you, what were you going to ask them? Prove to us that it's not going to have an impact that all these, that we have, like, like we did with the first part of First Light. Just, just as example, I'm not picking on them. But remember they had a very, very tight little circle of lots there that was a parcel that was primarily on Namburg soils. Which are somewhat play drained.
Right. But what, what you did and actually your suggestion and the board took it and ran with it was we reorganized that development so that it would work. And why wouldn't that be the case going forward with other developments?
It would be, but you're gonna, it's, and you can't do it that way, but I'll tell you, a lot of what we were doing was conjecture. I mean, we were using common sense saying that much, that much concentration of effluent within a very limited area with no gradient, because gradient does make a difference. It makes water move faster, even subsurfaceally. Uh, with no gradient, we intuitively knew that this could be a problem long-term or maybe even short-term. And the applicant was willing to agree to that. Uh, but in other cases, we may have situations where you're going to say prove to us that it works and they get a hydrogeologist says it works. Okay, now what?
I don't know. I just know when you try to, uh, for the short time I've been in the town of Arundel, when you try to, you know, implement these blanket, uh, you know, uh, ordinances or, uh, I don't know what else you would call it, rules and, and, uh, you know, townwide measurements and conditions, you get a lot of pushback. And so I think probably the best thing to do is to deal with things in a flexible way and look at them on a case by case basis and develop a criteria that works across all these types of developments so that we can do our best to protect what's existing and allow what is being proposed to coexist safely.
Okay. So what would you want for minimum lot size reduction?
I don't know. That's, that's above my pay grade.
But that is our pay grade because this is the land use ordinance and we have to come up with the answer.
Right. Well, I'm merely suggesting a vehicle, uh, that we might use to implement whatever it is we implement. I just don't think it should get too complex. So do you have a number in mind, Ted, that's sort of like a, a floor? Uh, is 21,000, 25,000 square feet? Is that what you had in mind for a minimum lot size?
State of Maine says it's 20,000. It doesn't care what the soil type is. That's because they're looking at things from a longitudinal standpoint. They're looking at it in two dimensions. They, uh, septic system's got to be a hundred feet from, from the well.
Well, yeah.
Got to be at least 10 feet off the property line. And so they, they basically draw a circle out with a hundred feet. In a circle, they say, okay, this basically comes up with a half acre. It takes into not, it does not take into account number of bedrooms. It doesn't take into account topography. It doesn't take out into account soils. It just says that's the minimum lot size and it's based only on, on, on distance and the distance of a hundred feet, any, anybody up it, up at Health and Human Engineering is going to tell you that's kind of an arbitrary number that they pick because they feel it's a safe number.
I just think we're going to get totally tripped up if we make it too complicated. I'm sort of with Tom on that.
I would agree that getting too complicated would do it. Maybe we just said that if you're on, you have, you, you basically say if you're on a poorly drained soil or somewhat poorly drained soil, that you can't get a reduction or you could say if you're on a, and you, in any other district, you get a half, half the size, half the, half the mandated lot size. But then when you get into one acre district, you know, half that is the minimum lot size for a lot in this, in the, in, in the state of Maine.
So I guess my, you know, for lack of a better word, just, just gut on this would be classed, what you have in the table here in the soil drainage classification, class two and class three. I would be comfortable going down to 30,000 square feet, about three quarters of an acre. In a, in a, in a, um, R1. Right? And then anything more than that, any of the class four, five, six, or one even, where you'd want to get, I mean, one's tricky because you're not worried about, like you said, the dimensional issues because it's just going straight downward. It's not going out. So maybe that could fit into the class two and three and let the plumbing code deal with whatever additional treatment has to occur on class one. You know, that's not going to dictate your lot size.
Right.
But then, you know, you wouldn't want to necessarily, I mean, unless we were comfortable seeing, you know, and then, in an, in the R three or the, the rural residential, you know, going down to a 30,000 square foot lot, we'd have to have some kind of stipulation based on the district. So that's just sort of my gut, you know, and that's assuming no public water and sewer.
That's right.
That is, that's a, that is a whole different ballgame.
And if you recall, there was a time when the, when the planning board required, um, a common sewer system. When I first got here, you guys had a mandatory water supply and, and, and sewer and, uh, cluster, I shouldn't say cluster, common sewer and common.
Yeah, but it was never put into effect.
Yeah, we never had one that was built.
No, the only thing.
Bartlett Farms.
Oh, maybe.
Okay. Bartlett Farm wasn't because the fact is that, uh, with the public water, you had to go through the state of Maine and turn it on to have public utility controls and everything else for the water. And the sewer system is not common at Bartlett Farms. It's individual.
So I, I have another question that's nagging at me here with, so this is applying to, um, cluster development. But would, wouldn't we also want to ensure that the problems don't happen on any, any other type of development? With just a, a single lot? So we're in, in the, in effect, do we want this to apply to all development?
I think you do. I mean, I think it applies to all development.
Well, that's where it was starting to go. That's why we've gotten a little bit off track because we're, we're talking about, remember, the only reason we're doing this is determine how much, uh, how much a lot, cluster lot be reduced. You know, what, when, when you're talking about applying this town wide, that means changing the zoning from being comp plan based on a, on, on how we want the town to look to space, which is we size, that's the determine. To care, so like where your zoning, zoning would be clearly have to be revamped if you did it on a townwide basis. And this, looking at, at the, uh, at the, uh, reduction, how much do we reduce a lot? In a cluster development? How much do we reduce it? And should we have a limitation on how we reduce that? And I, we, we agreed that we should explore doing it based on what the soils are. That you can reduce a lot much better to, to a much lower or a much smaller size if it is on good soil versus reducing a lot to a much smaller size on very poor soil.
Susan, you have a comment? Susan?
I had a question to couple in with, um, what Susan was saying. Is there a way you can have them review on what size home and what sort of use of the septic system and, and use of it? Cause you said there isn't anything on your, um, that you can tell how, what kind of house they're going to build, how many rooms it's going to be, how many people are going to live on it? Um, that would affect your septic use and use of it and also the well use and everything else. Is there something you can do for a check-in to see how big as of, like, as of my friends across the street, the houses are huge mongus, but the lots are puny. They're falling in all of the, um, the ordinances, but the houses are, are huge. So the amount of people that could live in them. So, the amount of people that could live in them could be a lot, which would be.
I'm sorry, um, I must be breaking up on you guys because you're breaking up on me, so I'm only getting part of what you're saying, but. Yeah, the plumbing code does take into account how many people, I mean, it doesn't buy back. I- it's basically completely on bedrooms, so you know, you have to add an X number of, of gallons per bedroom. So, it makes an assumption that the more, more bedrooms, the more, uh, water usage and that's.
Is there anything on your lot usage? In other words, if the ti- the house is taking up the, you know what I mean? Like I, I heard what you were saying. But I'm saying if your, your land use cluster, cause you're talking about cluster development. Putting a big house so it just fits on this little property for your, I don't know.
Well, the problem, and you might remember in a, in a development that you, you were, um, watching very carefully. The one thing we, we always, we made them do was put a lot, put the building on the lot and show us how they could in fact get the septic. And the well to actually meet the state plumbing standards and still accommodate a house in a driveway under it.
We made it. And, and also what's important in a subdivision is that it, they don't impact a, a neighboring or adjacent well.
Right.
And I, I, I tend to agree with, with Sue. The one thing that we don't do, we have them show us on the, the map. Where the, the footprint for the building is, but we don't know how big that building actually is. How many bedrooms does it have?
Square footage?
But square footage is kind of.
That tells you how big the building is and sizing of the house. I mean, uh, your total square footage, you know, is fifteen hundred feet or turn. You have a, a building that's twenty-five hundred square feet, I mean, or the.
It doesn't tell you how many bedrooms.
It, it doesn't because you could have a, you could have a, a, an eighteen hundred square foot house with three floors in it or two floors in it. In, in a rental, so you could end up with thirty-six hundred square feet, but it's going up instead of stretching out and around.
I'm sorry for that, for thinking of it. It's, when you, do you guys factor in garages and such and that too, or is that living space?
No, we factor in garages in terms of circulation to make sure that, I think if. Most places, they do put a garage on their prototype, because what we asked them to do is put a prototype house on there. Um, basically showing us that they could fit the house on there and they could fit the septic and the, and the well. And the configuration of all those work, there's, there were several, we run into situations where we see a, a, a well is. I think this happened actually in, in the project you're, you're familiar with. Where the well was actually of the septic was located, uh, basically above the house or up, up gradient from the house. And we told them change that because that's not realistic. You're not gonna pump all of the septic system. So, we do require realism from them and part of that realism is, yeah, put a garage in. If you're gonna have a garage, put in a garage. We assume you're gonna put, put in a garage because that's pretty much a standard these days in most subdivisions that you have garages. Uh, they may not build it, but you've gotta have the capability to put it in and we, we asked them for that. But, you know, a- as, as we say here, the, the issue is, you know. Ways of doing this, either we say, set a minimum lot size based on the soils. Um, or else we, the planning board's gotta be super vigilant every time and look at those soils and say. Or look at the gradient, gradient's another issue. If it's too steep, wow, jeez, that's, that's gonna be a problem. They're not gonna be able to treat that stuff where it's gonna cause potential erosion. Uh, the planning board's gonna have to be very vigilant on lots and make what I would say would be. You would have to make lot by lot decisions of whether or not that lot is a suitable size or not. And what I think we're trying to do is provide some benchmark. So, the planning board is not accused of being arbitrary and capricious when you say, oh, I don't like lot eleven, I don't think it's big enough. Needs trying to provide the planning board with some sort of legally defensible position. Say, this is the minimum lot size and we're not gonna let you go any, anymore. And, and that legally defensible position would be based on, on the ability of that land to be able to handle that soil. Handle that's, that use and the best way to do that is grading the soils. But if the planning board wants to do it, I mean, we wrote it originally, I, the, the reason I kept exploring this is because I did have that. Argument in there that I believe it was, wow, where was it? Minimum lots, that option one. Was it was, I said, minimum lot size should be determined by the planning board. Based on factors such as conformance with natural contours of the land, usable yard area privacy. So, stability, suitability for septic disposal, adequate locations for primary and reserve septic fields. In relation to well locations, setback from roads, topography buffers from incompatible uses or views and lack configuration. Should be designed to permit adequate space for septic system well and, and yard areas. And, and that was option one and this for minimum lot size, so the planning board would do it on a case by case basis. And have to be very vigilant when you review these cluster subdivisions. Uh, the other one was saying, well, well, why don't we just make it a little easier and say that you. Lot sizes is based on the, the type of soils and terrain.
Now, the fact is, we're doing the diligent work, but who's gonna be doing it in the future? Cause we may not always be here. I mean, the fact is, if you got poor soils and everything else. And longevity, do you have to have a spot well enough so that you could put in a alternative system?
Well, that's what it was.
If you're on, if you're on a minimum lot size of, let's say, one a- a half an acre.
Well, that's, that's what I meant by a reserved field. You have a primary and a reserved field. What's done a lot these days is they dig up the, uh, the primary field when it, it fails and replace all the soil. Which can be a rather pricey thing to do. Because they don't have adequate area to put in a reserved field. And the reserved field would be where you go when the primary field fails, because the primary field will fail. All septic systems don't go forever, they all fail, not if it's when. So, I guess my, my question is. It, it appears that the, the board is getting concerned that the complexity of this might be getting too much. I think Jamie tried to shave it down. Let's say, instead of listing all the, all the rest of that, we just reference the, uh. Reference the USGA, uh, the SCS Soil Survey for York County, which hasn't changed the last forty years. Say those soils that are classified as somewhat poorly drained, you can only reduce the lot by X number of, X percentage. To a minimum, no, no less than this, this size lot. And for other soils, let's say that what we call, what would be well drained and, and moderately well drained, you can go fifty percent or. Seventy percent, I don't, I don't care, you could make an arbitrary number. But it would still be subject to the planning board with determination that, that the lot size fits the terrain and, and, uh. All those other standards.
And the onus would be on the developer to prove or to show. That it, that what he's proposing can actually be supported on the lot. And if that, and we can have a list, which is our criteria in terms of. You know, gradients and other things that you're talking about, if there, if it comes into question based. On the soil of our, you know, proposed development. And different lots within a development are gonna have potentially different, you know, situations and different soils. And so they, they have to be considered, uh, separately. And that's why one blanket rule is an issue. And I think, um, I like number one that we came up with and I like also putting the onus on the developer.
Well, the onus is on the developer, either on option one or option two, it doesn't.
Right, but I mean, really, uh, using this chart that you just presented. And using that as a guide in terms of, uh, how we make decisions. About what can be built and where it can be built on particular lots.
Which, um, so, I, I think, uh, what, what I'm hearing is, is, um, not allowing. Most developments to, to be clustered, almost, it almost seems like we, um. Most developers may not be begging to be clustered. And I think this, and I think it's important that, that clustering stays in effect, but. This is almost putting the onus on us. They, they can easily find a reason not to have a small lot. They might come in saying, well, the, the, the soil is no good and we need to have two acre lots. And which really negates the cluster requirement. Um, you know, it's, how are we to know? Uh, that they, they, the, the soil is good enough to have smaller lots and that, that puts the burden on us. Rather than on them.
Hang on, we've got somebody in the audience with a question. Whoever that phone person is.
Uh, Jack Reitz.
You're showing up in two different places, Jack.
That's right, I, I, uh, first of all, I was wondering. How long this discussion will go on and whether you're going to talk. Uh, also about, uh, another aspect of the, uh, residential growth ordinance. And that is the, uh, distribution of, uh, apartments and condos. That's on, uh, I think page eleven of the, uh, town planner document. And was the primary discussion point with the, uh, selectmen recently. I would like to speak to that if you're gonna get to this topic. Thank you.
I don't think that's, that's not on this agenda, Jack, unfortunately. The planning board hasn't, uh, hasn't put that up yet. I think we, we, we wrestle with that, what, last time? I believe we wrestle with that issue of.
We did, we, we weren't able to come to a decision. In terms of whether we want to offer more permits for multifamily and age restricted. Or if we wanna do some kind of, uh, a multi-permit. And say you can have one permit and put up for, for units, for example. We just haven't reached the, the, the decision on that aspect yet.
I, I realize that and I, I understand that it's in its early discussion age, um, stage. Uh, but, uh, uh, it, it was a primary discussion topic with the selectmen. And what, what I would like to do then is to, uh, provide a document that I've written. And all of the, uh, uh, supporting evidence, uh, that I have to, uh, support the arguments that I have. And this is specific to, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, forty. The number forty that you've decided to retain and how they might be redistributed and restructured. And what the impact will be. I, I personally think this issue is far, far larger. Than the one you're currently discussing, uh, in terms of the future growth of the town.
But as we mentioned to the, uh, select board at that meeting. We're not gonna be able to have anything ready for the town meeting dealing with that particular aspect. We have the growth ordinance on the agenda for public hearings in two weeks. We probably, we may not get this, uh, on the agenda, uh, at that point. And so, dealing with the, the multifamily and elderly housing. Underneath the grow- growth ordinance is gonna take us a little bit longer. Than, than something that we could have together in two weeks to get it onto the town warrant. But if you could, if you could send, if you could send the information you have up to the town planner, he can disseminate it out to all of us.
Okay, uh, I, that would be fine. I will, I will do that. And, uh, we'll look forward to, uh, participating in those discussions. This, by the way, is the very first, uh, planning board meeting I've ever attended. And, uh, I'm really impressed by your thoroughness and, uh, the discussion. Uh, but, uh, like school board meetings sort of I've attended for the last twelve years, they go on a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Forward to getting your document, Jack.
I think we lost him. Well, so, well, how can we wrap this up? And leave it in a, we're obviously not gonna make any final decisions tonight. So, should we consider? I mean, Tad, Rich, how do you think we should consider this so we can? You know, reach some kind of consensus maybe?
Well, like, I, if, if we, if we leave it, uh, under option one, where we're making the decisions. I s- I think we need to have table twelve one and table twelve three. Included as part of that discussion. So that we can look at it and say, based on, based on the soil type, we're looking at restricting it to this, to this kind of a number. Class one, you can reduce it by fifty percent, but no more than twenty-five thousand feet, but you have to justify the fact that you wanna reduce it. Cause, you know, I, we don't wanna just make it an arbitrary here. If you, if you're on, what is class one? Uh, if you're on Adam's soil. That's gotta be some old dirt for Adam to have had it, but if you're going to be on Adam's soil, then you get a. You get a fifty percent reduction to no less than, pick a number, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five. A thousand square feet, but if you want that reduction, you have to be able to justify it. And, and give us a good, solid reason as to why we should allow you to.
Yeah, but the other question to ask is, when we're doing the soil or anything else. Are they doing it just for where they're gonna put it? Are they doing it for the, uh, acreage or? Uh, throughout the property?
They would be doing it.
Put in one spot and bat it over in another.
No, I think they'd be doing it based upon where they're going to be putting the house, you know?
Yeah, typically a high intensity soil survey is much, is, is for the area of development. And it's more intensely mapped, I, you know, the high intensity versus the, the published SCS soil surveys or medium intensity. So, ultimately, the, the test borings that they did for, for the mapping. Are much more, are much more spread apart in a medium intensity than a high intensity.
Well, to Susan's point, we could start looking at it and say, if one of the requirements is that you give us a high density soil study. So that you have more samples of the kind of soil that we're going to be building on.
To, you do require that.
We do, okay, never mind.
So, I.
I think we should close the subject for the night.
I, I, I guess I need direction on what you want me to do, um, cause, um. I mean, I can refine option one, which just puts it in, just makes it verbal, but what I'm hearing you, you wanna do is. Do a hybrid between option one and option two. And actually pick, pick a number.
Well, I'm, I'm a big fan of. Uh, and, and I'll be quite honest, it's only because of this, the, uh, survey and the study that was done by the Kenny Monk River Commission. That, that has said, you got some serious issues with the soils. So, I'm a big fan of looking at it and saying, what can we do to protect, uh, the environment? From a soils point of view because of the, the pollution that has been created. Which is why I like the tables, the, of, of table one and table three, because they kind of blend. The, those two pieces together. I like Jamie's idea though of saying, instead of twenty-five thousand, make it thirty-five, thirty or thirty-five thousand. And, and make the lot a little bit larger that you have to build on. And if you're in, if you're in class two. I suppose you could say sixty-seven thousand, but, but no less than twenty-five. Uh, but if you're in the other, if you're in class one or three, it's fifty, but no less than thirty. Class four, twenty-five percent, put no less than one acre. Class four is pretty rough.
Yeah.
Situation.
Yeah. Yeah, cl- well, class four is what we just did a subdivision on. Yeah, well, class four is what we just did a subdivision on.
Yeah, and that's, that, some of that stuff has water that's within what? Six or eight inches of the surface?
Uh, it's, it's about 12.
It's about 12. Okay. That's, that's still pretty close.
It's, it can be.
Yeah.
It may, yeah. Uh, you know, some of the modeling was, uh, fair, a few in faint, which indicated every several, every, every couple of years or every five years, they have a, they have a high water line. And then, you know, it, it really, it doesn't matter until you get to the, you know, the, uh, the frequent, uh, distinct and frequent, uh,
And, and I do agree with Susan to a point that, that we need to take into consideration the size of the building and the number of bedrooms that are going in there.
Well, that's true, especially if it's a four, if you're putting four bedrooms in, you're, you're adding another, what is it? 90 gallons, 90 gallons of bedroom? So instead of 270, you're adding another 90 gallons to that. Now we're talking about a larger field.
Yeah. And we, we can start, uh, asking those questions. When it comes, when the developer comes in and says he's putting in a development. And depending upon the size of the, of the lot and the type of soil that's on there, we could restrict it and say, well, no, you can only put in a two bedroom or you can only put in a three bedroom house.
To the chair, another question.
Yeah, Marty.
Now, we're talking over the years of, we'll say different type of toilets, okay? Fact is, uh, the old, 40 years ago, a toilet always had so much gallonage. Today they have had more efficiency, so they're not wasting as much water at the same time. And that might be a factor also.
Yeah, you're right. It could be. Cause they, they use a lot less water now than they did when I was growing up.
Yeah, so I always assumed that almost any site can be engineered to, to make the, uh, the, the leaching work. So how does that play into this? There are poor soils. Could they bring in some, uh, fill and a pump? And what, would they be allowed to do that if they could engineer it?
Oh, the, the, it, it's all a question of where you are in relation to the, um, the limiting factor. So can you put a fill in? Sure, you can put fill in and you'll see mound systems. People see that all the time. And that is putting the bed above the surface of the land is what's happening. And so you are basically, it's an engineered system where it's above the distribution system. It's actually above the surface of the actual land.
Right.
Can you do that?
So if.
What happens when it comes down to that interface, you know? Usually it's, the, the intent is to have it treated sufficiently that the biologics are out of it by then, but not necessarily the nutrient load.
So guys, I mean, we're in such minutia. I mean, what we're trying to do is, you know, as technology advances, there's going to be changes. You're, there are going to be adaptations for what can be built. And it's going to make it easier to build on inadequate soils, blah, 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 whatever. This, let, let's just try to come up with some kind of structure. So that we can sort of oversee what's being built and try to protect, uh, what's existing and make sure that what's being built is sound. Um, and, and let the rest of it, time and technology and circumstances, uh, you know, dictate the rest. I mean, that's my personal opinion, but I think we're way in the weeds here.
But we need to give, we, you're right, we're, we're in the, in the weeds, but we need to give some form of direction to the developer. So that when they look at the ordinance, they don't, they see something that we want from them, not just a, oh, look, I can just go build anything I feel like it. Uh, because there's nothing in the ordinance that says that I have to do any kind of, we, I, we could demand pre-treatment on, on every septic system we put in. That would help. It might be a little expensive.
I'm sorry. Aren't they already required to approve that, that the system's going to work? That's why they do test pits and things like that. And, uh, won't, won't that catch, uh, isn't there already a system in place? Or regulations in place to catch most of these problems?
Doesn't the code enforcement, sir, go out and inspect the septic system before they bury it? Yeah, but, and we're, we're talking about, we're, we're talking about a, 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 a system that is designed for the house. A system that's based on that, that site there, that, and, and processing that material there. But the question is that that system is usually assumed to be on a certain sized lot. And if we're going with lots that are, um, small, cause we're, let's face it, guys, we're talking about taking lots. It just, we just went from a, we just did a project that was a three acre lots. Three acre lots on poor soils and we reduced them down to two acres and one acre. Okay, so that's means that there's that concentration of all that septic is going to be more concentrated than it might be in, in, in a normal subdivision. And that's, see, that's the downside, that's the questionable downside to a cluster subdivision is that, you know, the reason why you did two acre zoning originally was to ensure that you had enough area to process this stuff. This, I don't think the plumbing code is really designed to deal with, uh, to contemplate whole entire projects. With, with the set, with the septic systems very close together. I mean, we could do it. I don't know if it's going to work in the future. I don't know. I'm not sure. I'm not sure they know.
But with the Rundle's keep, Ted, what happened was, you know, and this is what we talked about when we, we made the changes. Is that cluster subdivisions, we need a certain amount of flexibility in terms of deciding whether or not cluster subdivision in that application is, is warranted adequate. Uh, you know, whatever. And then maybe some modification to make it work like we did with the Rundle's keep. Um, you know, we, we did the thing with ACT, we, we eliminated a lot. We did a whole bunch of other things that made it work and we still have a modified cluster development. So, I mean, we need some level of flexibility. So, you know.
I think at the same time, you're, you're misunderstanding Susan. This is a minimum standard. This isn't a, this is an ace, this is the minimum.
No, no, I understand that. So let's set a minimum standard, but I, let's leave it, leave it. So in, in proposal number one, we have, there's enough flexibility there to look at the situation on an, you know, uh, on a one by one basis, depending on the development, the soils and everything else, and come to some determination, uh, you know, individually, uh, per project.
Okay, so what you, what you're proposing is we do option one as it is.
And maybe, and include minimum standards.
Whoa, 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 no, 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 you can't do both. We, we, and the reason why I'm saying that is you say include minimum standards. What minimum standards?
Okay, then I say we do option number one.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, I vote for option number one.
We gotta vote, we've, we've got to vote for option one.
That's it. That's, that's what I vote for.
I, I like number one as well. I think it, it, first of all, it's simple. Second of all, I think it catches most of the issues.
And I think option one is easy for people to read and understand as well.
I think, I think option number one is arbitrary and capricious, actually. Because there's no, there's no concept. The minimum lot size is determined by the planning board based on these factors.
I like Jamie's idea.
I think, yeah, and I, I think we need to have a, a, I guess a pared down version of option two. Something pretty straightforward. We've got it, we've got to not get into the weeds on this. We're looking at minimum. I mean, the, the focus has gotten into septic, but really the focus here is minimum lot size that will readily support a cluster subdivision. So what we're looking to do is strike the balance of how big a lot practically needs to be in the context of the different zoning districts. So that they are, they are allowed to be clustered and the, and the overall impact of the subdivision is lessened.
Okay, I'll stay with that. I like that idea.
But, but to Rich's point, I think from, from the designer standpoint, I think number one is tough because you don't have any, any guideline of how much you can go. You know, to even start, to start the conversation. And then what happens when we do push back on somebody and their consultant is saying, yes, this works, this works. We're saying, no, we don't think it does. And we get appealed because we've, we've, um, rejected a proposal. And then it goes to the court and, you know, are we, are we found that we don't have basis for rejecting it? So that's why I think if we did something, you know, like I said earlier, if it's R1, have a, have a 25% reduction from an acre to three quarters, um, on the, the good soils. Maybe on our, you know, on the, the two, three, four acre lots, maybe we don't go quite 50%. But maybe we do, I don't know, 33% on, on the good soils and 25 on the bad ones. I don't, you know, just trying to keep it easy, something that can be readily calculated and, you know, and designed from.
I think we don't need to be challenged.
You know what, what I, I like is option two, but just the first paragraph without all those, the tables, the soil tables. I think it's, it's clean and it, it does the job.
But, but the tables are given us.
But that's the reason I like, go ahead, Marty.
The tables are giving us the guidelines.
Right.
And the reason why.
Right. And that, that's the reason I like the tables, because they give us the guideline. It, it says minimum lot size is based on something. This is what we're going to base it on.
Joe and tell.
Fine soils. They are, they're something, they're a tangible item with a tangible standard and a tangible performance that you can defend in court.
Joe and tell.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately I would.
Proposal works, I think, if that's what, if that protects the board from being accused of being capricious and arbitrary. And maybe Rich is right. Um, in fact, he's often right, but, um, I, I think Jamie's proposal, uh, but I think we do need the chart.
Yeah. Oh, I, I, my, my proposal is predicated on that, that table 12 dash one.
Yeah, I, I think that the two tables of 12, one and 12, three, regardless if we go with option one or option two for the minimum lot sizes, I think we need to have those two tables.
But Jamie has given us something quantifiable that people can actually say, aha. So I'm fine with that too. I just, you know, I don't want to get so sidetracked that we lose focus on what we're really trying to accomplish here.
Okay, but then Susan, we couldn't call ourselves the Rumble Planning Board.
If what? If we weren't capricious and arbitrary?
If we didn't get sidetracked easily.
Oh.
Hey, I've got bad news for you guys. I've worked for a lot of planning boards. I've been before a lot of planning. He's been in that same situation. You guys are no different than anybody else.
Oh, I thought we were special.
These aren't easy issues. They're tough because there is no set, there is no formula for this stuff. And you guys have blazed a lot of, of pathways that, that other towns don't. They just, they just adopt the, the standard model subdivision ordinance and, or the modeled zoning ordinance and go from there and then say, why didn't this work? You folks keep changing things to make it fit your changing circumstances in your community as it evolves. And you should be applauded for that because that's what has to happen. Okay? So, you know, you, you may get frustrated about being in the weeds and so forth, but this is where the hard work gets done. And this is how you accomplish your goals.
So let me, let me see if I can clarify this. We're looking at option two with, with the tables and Jamie's calculation about percentages within the various districts.
Okay, what others, Jamie?
So I mean, I just was, I mean, ultimately spitballing, but you know, I would say in order to prevent a, an R1 lot from being too small, what I would, what I would say is class one, two or three, you're eligible for a 25% reduction to take an acre minimum size down to three quarters. Class four, five and six, you get no lot size reduction bonus. And when I, when I say that, I'm, I'm, what I would say is the, the predominant, you know, soil type in the developed area.
Yes.
You know, don't, don't calculate all the, you know, some resource protection zone, you know, it's, because that's, that's not, it's not pertinent. As you get into the, the larger lot zoning districts, you know, maybe class one, two and three could drop down whatever the fraction would be to, you know, in acre and a quarter, something like that. Have a, have a 50, 60,000 square foot lot in the good class one, two and three soils, maybe an acre and a half in the, in the four, five and six.
I, I would say in the six, nothing at all. You just don't build there.
Yeah, ultimately, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the, the realism of getting a septic system into the six is going to dictate that.
I think class five could be the same boat, even if you do a mound.
Right. So class five and six are going to be delineated as wetlands, most likely.
Yeah. So does that give you some direction, Ted?
Yeah, no, we, I wanted, so I'm going to cut this chart up into four different classifications though, for residential. Cause Jamie was talking, in the, in the R1, we're going to reduce it this much. In the R2 and three, we might reduce it this way. R2 and three and four. I was wondering, that's why I had the minimum lot size of 25, Jamie says 30. To make sure that we weren't going to go too far down in any of the, any of the, uh,
Yeah.
That was it.
Yeah. I, I think that would be fine.
Okay, so I'll, I'll play with this chart a little bit, given what Jamie said, has said. It makes the adjustments. We'll get rid of chart 12, two, which I wanted to get rid of anyways, because it was way out of control. It, yeah, it's, it's too, it's, it's too hard. And the other, the other thing is I'm going to get a lot of pushback if I start using this. You're going to get a lot of pushback from the main soil scientists, because they don't agree with the New Hampshire soils scientist buddies. There's.
As justification.
You never agree with the neighboring state. Come on, Ted.
As justification, we can put that there and show we did not use it. So they can't say.
No, they, we can point them at the video and tell them to come and watch it.
Yes.
By, by not including it, Marty, we sort of get rid of, you know, beg that question, don't you think?
Keep your shit to show to them that what you discarded as reasonable planning board members. So this is, this is where the planner was going. We shut him down fast.
All right, next.
So other business?
I think, I think at this point, we should stop and let Ted work that up. It's almost, it's quarter past nine.
We turn into pumpkins at 9:30.
That's right.
Boy, Susan, you would have loved this back when we were going to 10:30.
I was out of those.
We had, we had a fireman walk out of the station and quit because we were there at 11 o'clock at night.
Well, there were a couple in the library who were there until 10:30. So, um, anyway, so what else do we have, Rich?
Uh, I don't believe there's anything else that is on the agenda.
Tom Planner have anything to report?
Nothing new, nothing interesting, although we do have, I have three new applications for May 4th. I will go over that with the chairman probably tomorrow.
Uh, yeah, I'll stop in tomorrow. Cause you're going to want the Zoom link.
I want the Zoom link and I'm going to want this video.
What's going on route one where they're clearing uh, across the street from the Eagles Club?
Is he clearing again?
Yeah.
Yep.
Somebody is. It's not. Somebody is, it's not, it's a different spot.
Okay, thanks. Clearing across from the Eagle Club. I'll go and take a look tomorrow.
I wanna know what's going on Limerick Road, two houses up from mine. I'm sorry, you broke up.
He's putting in a barn.
He is, okay.
He's doing it all himself.
I was guy, I was kinda wondering, because I, he went through and he cleared it all out, left a small line of trees.
Got a building permit. So you're gonna have four applications before you on the, on the, along with the public hearing.
What ones are those possibly?
Uh, there's one, there's, uh. Sylvain Terrio wants a, uh, uh, wants his subdivision to be subdivided. Um, I have a gentleman who's got a, um, uh, wants a contractor yard one. Uh, he's been basically operating illegally, so he's coming in to get a permit. He'd do it in that location. Um, and let's see, uh, Irving Road subdivision back, call it a Rundle keep two. Wants to use the same techniques he used in, uh, in a Rundle keep to get this one through. It's down to three lots at this point. So, um, that, so we'll call it a Rundle keep two. They're come, they've come in. And there's another one, I'm trying to remember.
What about a holy donut?
Uh, they're, they're almost done. I mean, they brought in a box of them the other day and made everybody very, very happy. Um, and, uh, they, they're just working on their Q, Q, uh, system. They were looking at the septic system. Figuring out what the longevity of that was gonna be. Um, they've got their, they've already pumped out the, um. They haven't, they haven't, they haven't closed the deal completely. They haven't closed on the whole property. But they're doing their due diligence. They're checking out the, the grease traps. And they're psyched. They're, they're playing, they're, they're psyched to go in. They really are.
Is that going into an existing spot?
Going seafood market.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they're gonna be, uh, taking the church, turning that into administrative offices. The actual restaurant is going to be, uh, the proposed, is going to be the production facility. Uh, it is permitted use, it's food preparation. And, uh, then they're gonna take the ice cream shop and make that a drive up. Um, for purchasing donuts. We talked about a retail. They said, we'll take it one step at a time. We'll see how the, uh, drive up does. We need to do retail and offer some, you know, some other things there. We're gonna preserve enough space to be able to do that. But we're not gonna do it to start, but they are gonna.
That's good.
To start, yeah.
Where's their current, um, production?
Uh, they're renting a space in Scarborough.
Okay.
Coming here. They, they wanna own the land, they want, they own the production, they wanna make a, make an indentation into the York County. Into the Cannonboks, basically.
Yeah.
Uh, it fits all their needs and they're, uh, they're good to work with, they're easy to work with. They say the same thing about the Rundle so far, so we're. We, we've been courting them and it's been paying off, so.
At least they have three phase power and water.
Yeah, three phase power and water, Marty. The only problem they don't have is they don't have septic, but they've got a very large system in the back.
Yes, I know that system.
Yes, I know you do.
Really good granny donut.
Ten building.
They, they, I'm really, I, you know, it's gonna be a real struggle to have them here. They're gonna, it's gonna be a struggle, uh, resisting their donuts.
No, not really.
Uh, no, they're good. Rich, actually, you know what? They're actually better than I remember. When I first got them. I was, went, oh, potato donuts. I, you know, remember my father, my ex-father, my having, having those. But they've got some incredible flavors. They, they keep expanding on their, their technique and so forth, and they're getting really good.
I had them when they first opened in Scarborough, but I haven't had any since then.
You might wanna try it again, because I think they've.
They, they're, they're never gonna beat Riley's donuts, so why bother looking for a better one?
Our condens.
Um, I think they might beat them, yeah.
I'll wait for the drive through.
Okay. I think the, the citizens of Rundle love it. We're gonna be, they will be able to pull, pull people into, uh, into the town from the box that went to.
Any, anything else that we have to discuss?
That would be the first drive in in a Rundle.
Drive through, yeah.
Well, it will be your, your first drive through, so you guys get to, get to work on the drive through. Um, that's conditional use, that's the only reason they come to the planning board. They're not coming to you for the facility, because it's permitted use there.
No, we have a drive through on the, uh, Infinity Bank.
Sure.
Yeah, bank, not, not food.
Yeah, non, non-conforming use. Oh, we do have a restaurant going in. Ashley's is, is gonna be revived, so.
Oh, really?
On one eleven?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that still in a Rundle?
Half.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering. I, I thought the bank was the last parcel.
Well, they're half in a Rundle.
We gotta, we, we made a deal with Patty and Lyman. Uh, we get the building, they get the parking lot. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there, but there is still gonna, we're gonna have to do a combined, uh, meeting with Lyman. Because, um, they would, the, uh, the tenant, tenant is dumping all this money into it. And he wants to, uh, make some improvements to the, uh, to the, uh. Wants to make a lot of improvements to the facility, including fix that bloody parking lot.
Is the, uh, is the new restaurateur gonna still serve the best coffee east of the Mississippi?
I hope so.
That signage, I think he's gonna take it down, because he's, he's a non-conforming use.
No, yeah.
So he's gotta preserve all the signage there to use for advertising his restaurant. So I think that sign may go, maybe it'll go on the inside, but right now, it's really tenuous. This took a lot of negotiating. Because, um, really technically, they, they were not, they, their non-conformity had almost expired.
It has expired, hasn't it? It's been more than two years.
Uh, they, they, they did.
They still stayed open a little bit, even though. It's one of those stretch the limits.
It was one of those.
That building looks like it's in rough shape. Is, are they gonna keep it?
In bad shape, yeah. But right now, they're gonna keep it. This guy's gonna dump some money into it. He's gonna dump money in the parking lot. But he's not gonna do it until it comes cease the planning work, because it's non-conforming use. The planning board has to review it. I've told him this, uh, right now, as long as the governor has her, her restrictions. Uh, he can operate the same number of seats, but he can't sit inside, so he can, he can have takeout. People could come in and get their meals and, and take them out or they could eat them outside. But once he does any expansions of any sort, and once he does any improvements, once he does any, uh, any changes. He knows he's gonna come see you guys. And that's, that, that was, that's what we made abundantly clear. So as soon as, uh, if he wants to operate with everything the way it is right now, with the same number of seating, which is twenty three seats. He wants to do that, he can, but if he expands that anyway, he has to come see the planning board. An expansion of a non-conforming use is no different than what we did with, uh, with, uh, Houston Furniture, if you recall. So he can expand fifty percent if you can find some place, it's a tiny lot. But he can expand fifty percent with the planning board, same way that, uh, Bill Houston did, so.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I got.
Somebody make a motion.
Make a motion with your chairman.
The second. Motion's been made and seconded.